...of the Lakeport City Council to order Tuesday, February 2nd, 2016. We're also meeting as the Lakeport Municipal Sewer District, Lakeport Industrial Development Authority, the Municipal Financing Agency of Lakeport, and the successor agency to the Lakeport Redevelopment Agency. Matten Clark?
Councilmember Parlette?
Here.
Councilmember Rochiel?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
And Mayor Spillmans.
What's his name?
Here. That's all right until everybody came up here, I thought maybe I didn't take a shower.
I took one about 20 minutes ago.
Yeah, out of the way. Tonight, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Burris if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will. The pledge leads us to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Tonight, if there's anyone that would like to speak on anything that's not on our agenda, there are forms in the back. You can fill those out and turn those into the city clerk. You can get your time up here since we're cornered, and we can't take any action or come to a consensus on anything that's not on our agenda. But now would be a good time to fill those out and turn them in if you'd like to speak up here. Next, we'll move on to item number three, which is acceptance of the agenda. We'll move to accept the agenda as posted or move or delete items. Are there any issues of the agenda this evening?
I'll make a motion to have it approved of the agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have acceptance of the agenda. We'll move on to urgency items. Do you have any urgency items? Okay. Item number four, consent agenda. These are expected to be non-controversial. They'll be acted on at one time without discussion. Any councilperson up here can remove anything or pull any item for discussion. Tonight, we have ordinances, which are waived except for reading by title. We have our minutes of our regular council meeting of January 19th, 2016. We have the warrant registers of January 21st, 2016, and then we have application 2016-003, staff recommendations, also with staff recommendations for the Lakeport Camp &amp; Shine 2016 to be held on Park Street on June 18th, 2016, in conjunction with the 2016 Annual Home &amp; Wine Beer Makers Festival. Are there any councilmembers that would like to pull anything this evening from the consent agenda? Okay. I'm going to enter in a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the consent agenda opposed to tonight? Sorry about that, I didn't ask. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes our consent agenda unanimously. Next up, we have citizen input. Matten Clark? We have citizen input. Valdade Burdi? Did I say that correctly?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Go ahead and come on up.
I would like to speak with regards to the agenda. Item 7C, that's Police Department Staffing.
Okay.
Is that appropriate now?
No, actually, what we'll do is anything that's usually public, this is reserved for anything that's not on the agenda. But we will open that up and we'll make sure that you have an opportunity. Sorry that it's towards the end of the meeting.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, well, if you can hang out Val, we'll bring you back up, and when she speaks on anything on that you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have your other citizen input? Okay, thank you. Next, we have a presentation from the Lake County Breastfeeding Coalition regarding breastfeeding welcome-to-here campaign. I know, I spoke to Desiree out in the lobby, Desiree Perez, and we have Jaylene White and Lorna Sides, perhaps, if you'd like to come up and...
Can we add another person up?
You sure can. I heard rumor there might be a third person.
Okay.
Come on up.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for having us on your agenda. We really appreciate it. We're here representing the Lake County Breastfeeding Coalition. Some of you may know or not know that we are present in the county, but we are. Just to give you a little bit of background on us, our coalition started in 2013. And, sorry?
Can I get your name? I know I read everybody's names, but I...
My name's Jaylene White. Um, our coalition started in October of 2013.
Is that mic on, Kelly?
Yeah. Am I not close enough?
Oh, there you go. You pulled it together really close.
Sorry to interrupt you. No, it's okay, I'm sorry. Can you hear?
Oh, yeah.
That's better. I'm really loud, I probably don't even need my microphone. But anyhow, we're a coalition that started in 2013. We're mainly comprised of other public agencies such as WIC, Public Health, the Lake Family Resource Center, and any public community members that are interested in coming to the coalition, as well as breastfeeding moms or upcoming breastfeeding moms. Our mission is to promote, protect, and support breastfeeding, and to improve the health and wellbeing of our community and the little members that are growing up in it. So, my name's Desiree Perez. Right now, basically, our current projects include hosting a booth at all of our local events, but it's for providing a comfortable space for breastfeeding moms to just feel comfortable. We are working on supporting moms, educating the public, and making barriers around breastfeeding. And we are running a welcome-to-here campaign, which is what we are here to accept you. So, this is what the claim looks like. It's pretty small. It is a clean, so it's not a sticker, no damage to any buildings or anything like that. What we are asking is that your businesses to show that they support the breastfeeding coalition and they support breastfeeding moms in the community. We do have a small list growing of businesses that are already doing so. So, any businesses in the county, or, you know, they can contact us directly just to show their support. So, we, I've dropped some of these out, but I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at that, but I can give that to you. And then we also have these little, it's a lot of cards that we provide for who are interested. So, with that, I will introduce, pass it over to Lorna Sides.
Hi, I'm Lorna Sides, and I'm going to speak for a little bit on why it is that we feel that breastfeeding is so important. It is important to the Surgeon General and the American Kennedy Pediatrics. They say it is the best way to feed the baby. There is a study that followed 14,000 children with courses six and a half years, and the children that were exclusively breastfed had significantly higher IQ scores than those who weren't exclusively breastfed. Plus, and this I thought was very interesting, on average, they received higher ratings from their teachers. So, not only were they smarter, but the teachers liked them better. That's an interesting combination. Breastfeeding, it not only reduces the baby's risk of colds and flus when they're young, but it actually improves their immune system for a lifetime. So, even a little bit of formula, a baby can set up an immune system response, and it's an inflammatory response, and it increases their health risk. So, inflammatory diseases that can be reduced by exclusive breastfeeding, including type 1 diabetes and type 2 diabetes. So, not only that it affects the juveniles, but also into your adulthood, also Crohn's disease, heart failure, the arteries, and angiotirrhosis. Also, when a mother breastfeeds her baby, she reduces her risk of cancer and reduces the baby's risk of cancer. So, that is huge for the population, the health of our population. Children that were breastfed have fewer allergies, that would be food allergies, environmental allergies like hay fever. Also, it reduces the risk of asthma and eczema. So, breastfeeding leads to less fussy eaters later in life. I love this fact. When you breastfeed your baby, the baby can actually taste the flavors of the foods that you've eaten recently. So, I always kind of compare the child that just gets formula to a child that's going to grow up to enjoy McDonald's, because every time they bite into that burger and eat those fries, it's always going to taste exactly the same. And this is what they're, they learn as infants. Where a child that a baby has breast, is going to have a whole variety of flavors during their first several months of their life. And so that when you introduce new foods, they already have a familiarity to the variety of flavors. And that's a child that's going to grow up to eat vegetables. Breastfed babies are less likely to grow up to be obese. You'll see any dentists in here, because you're going to save on braces. There's a study from Brazil, and it suggests that breastfeeding for more than nine months is the most effective way to prevent malachations in your baby's mouth that'll result in their needing dentures. Mom is more likely to fit into her pre-pregnancy jeans. Babies that are breastfed have a pleasant smell. Their BMs are less stinky. And breastfeeding, not, you like... And breastfeeding, I could go on. I've seen lists of a hundred, but I just got one more. And breastfeeding not only satisfies the baby's hunger, but also their emotional needs. And so, you're going to raise not only stronger, but emotionally healthy. And we're all looking for more of that in our city and in our county and our country and so forth. So, thank you very much.
It was Lorna, right?
Lorna Sides.
You know what? I have, I feel bad because I have hay fever. I don't really consider myself that smart. And my teacher said I talk too much, so I'm starting to think that maybe I wasn't breastfeeding. Just guessing.
But you still made it to be mayor, and there's lots of ways to raise healthy babies.
That's just because I'm stubborn.
And I'm glad you didn't get into your BMs.
I know. And one other thing I wanted to mention that I mentioned to Desiree, if you're interested in connecting with businesses in downtown Lakeport, you might want to check with Panette, just like Nanette, but with P, that runs the Main Street Association. She's usually out at that front desk when she's in here, and she's a great resource for businesses. I don't know if she'll be able to promote that with them, or just maybe, you know, help you in the listing and access to the businesses. That might help.
Do we have a breastfeeding mom that would like to say what?
Well, hi, my name is Alyssa Estrada, and I work with WIC. I'm also a dietitian technician and a breastfeeding mom. And I know that I have laws protecting me so that I can breastfeed my child in public. But as a busy mom, you know, I'm out and about, and shop locally, I've lived here my whole life, and it would just be wonderful to have support from different agencies in the city, you know, so I can feel more comfortable with doing so. When baby's hungry, she's hungry, and everybody else will know it too. But it's just wonderful to have the support, locally or not, you know. I know there's laws protecting us moms, but just to have that added support would just be wonderful, you know, from a mom, a student, somebody who's, like I said, lived here my whole life. It would just mean the world to have that support. And Mrs. Cheyenne?
What's your name?
She's fascinating.
She's a microbe.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
In closing, just, we have a list of businesses around the county that have already started, and we're trying to outreach to every angle, clearly, goes clearly, all of the communities that are involved. And we got a number of over 20 different businesses that have helped support it. And so, really, all that we're asking is just to support the claim. It's not that much to do, just support it in city buildings. That way, our families, moms, and babies can feel supported wherever they go. So, we're seeking for your guys' approval today to display these claims in the city buildings, which will let our families know that the city of Lakeport supports this mission as well. And we will continue on. We're going to go to Clearlake City Council and the Board of Supervisors for the county next. So, hopefully, you guys will be the frontrunners in participating in hanging these claims. All right, thank you.
Hang on. For the group at large, the biggest thing that I've noticed, being a parent, you know, parent of a breastfeeding child or children, the thing that concerns me the most is corporate America is always trying to get in there when the mother is most vulnerable. And she's in there, and she's usually in some kind of distress. After she's given a baby, she's happy and go lucky and everything, and they wheel in this big, you know, care package of all this junk from Mead Johnson and Ross and all that stuff, and they're loaded with baby formula. And correct me if I'm wrong, but breastfeeding doesn't happen instantaneously. It's a process, it takes time, it takes a little bit of due diligence. It's real easy for a newborn and their mother to, like, suddenly just say, "Well, I can't get my milk in, the baby's crying, let me just mix up a batch of this spew that is loaded with sugars and all kinds of god knows what kind of chemicals." Got to be one of the worst things that we've ever done in this country. But I think that one of the main steps that Breastfeeding Coalition needs to do is to combat corporate America going in there and giving them cases of formula right off the bat. Do you want soy? Do you want this? Do you want milk free, loaded with chemicals and all this stuff? And we've gotten further and further away from natural alternatives, the fact that the mother has the milk instantaneous and when she needs it after it comes in, but it's a process. And I think that going to the hospitals and the birthing centers and working on them and making sure that the mothers understand, even before they have children, that this is going on. Is that something that you're doing?
That's one of our goals, actually. We have that as a goal, to get with the hospitals and get an action plan. Yeah, so, you didn't mention hydrocortisone, which is like the number one, it refers to most of the formulas, or at least the soy formulas. But there are some coalitions around the state and around the country, and one project that they'll do, we don't have the money at this point to do that, is to buy back those bags, because usually, that first formula that a baby's going to get, mom's going to have a rough night, and she's going to remember that bag they sent her home from the hospital, which I think was...
And I've also noticed that the breastfeeding guides that they hand out conveniently have the exact same pictures that are on Similac and Soyolac and Infamil, and it's absolutely criminal, in my feeling, that that goes on, and these people have access to these very vulnerable women, and I think that's the place where it needs to start.
But some of the coalitions, they buy back the bags from the mother, so when the mother gets ready for her discharge, and they give her this bag with the formula in it, that the coalition has another bag that they can take instead, and with lots of gifts for breastfeeding moms, and that...
Like, pommes de terre, things like that.
Yeah.
Two of our goals this year on our, we just formulated our goals, and Megan's still in the advisory center, she wants to, I don't see, but two of our main goals, it's a huge monster to take on, and so we're starting local and trying to build up. One of our main goals is to meet with the hospitals and develop, see what they're even talking about at that moment when birth happens, if they're even in discussion. From many conversations we've had with a lot of moms, that discussion isn't even taking place, because it's much easier just to say, "Here," and then it won't take the resources. It takes a certified lactation consultant or somebody knowing what they're doing to even promote that. And if they don't have those resources there, it's easier to promote a bottle. So, the coalition, one of our goals is to get in with the hospitals, and at least, we have a breastfeeding pamphlet that gives facts, resources, what you can do. We're trying to get that into the hospitals, but that's going to be, that's going to be a corporate monster step. And the other step that we're taking that we can do locally and have a presence on is we're doing pop-up educational booths. So, we are going to randomly pop up in Lucerne, in Clearlake, in wherever, and just be there to give support, information, whatever we can give for those local breastfeeding moms that may not have the support. So, we're taking on little steps, claiming starting with that. But those are our plans. We foresee all of that in the broader future.
The mom resources, tell me.
I was just saying, as a mom, just having those resources available, you know, knowing who to call when something like that happens. If it's, you know, 6 o'clock in the morning and your baby's hungry, there's the bottle from the hospital. Who's your support, you know? Who are you going to call? Who's going to give you that advice? Who's going to help you walk through it, you know? That's something that this coalition can do.
Alyssa, can I get your last name also? Because, sorry, I've got to roll out.
Estrada.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That microphone will never be the same.
Do we need to say for any reason?
Nope.
Okay.
You can say it in your life.
I mean, we must to.
Yes, you must say it to the very end.
It's required.
How did you let him go?
Keep a warm room there. All right. Next, we'll move on to item six, which are one of our first public hearings, item eight, ordinance change to a zoning ordinance. We're going to conduct a public hearing and adopt the proposed ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance, Chapter 17 of the Lakeport Municipal Code to improve transparency and streamline the processing of land use development permits. And Kevin, this is the first of a few that you've got to...
Yeah, I think I've got you guys enough paper to keep you guys busy for a while. So, there we go. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The ordinance before you this evening would amend several sections of the city zoning ordinance as a means of improving transparency in decision-making and also streamlining permit processing procedures. This amendment does not change any permitted uses within the zoning district, nor does it result in any changes in the city's land use maps. In just over my year as your community development director, the chief complaints that I receive in regards to city land use processes have been in regards to the length of time necessary to process permits, ambiguity, and lack of consistency in project standards, and poor communication of policies and requirements by city staff. My staff and I have made a considerate effort in addressing these factors through the addition of new staff and improvement in customer service, and an ongoing audit of our internal procedures. But a key component in reversing this legacy of having a perceived poor relationship with the public, most specifically the business and development community, has to come in the form of changes of the procedures and processes codified in our zoning ordinance. The suggested amendments provided to you by staff and reviewed by the planning commission in a sense kind of represent the low-hanging fruit. It's by no means a comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance, but these are a couple of quick items that my staff and I have located and I think will go a long way. The requested amendments pertain specifically to the administrative approval process and then also the land use application review process. In regards to the administrative approval process, the zoning ordinance provides myself as the community development director the authority to approve certain discretionary land use development permits. My frustration with this is that there is no true notification process codified in our zoning ordinance that lets the public know of some of these decisions. The zoning ordinance does provide a five-day appeal period of any decision made by myself or my staff, but if you don't know that the permit has been issued, you're not likely to know that you need to come in and appeal that decision. The proposed revision kind of carries over a tool that's already utilized in our zoning ordinance for zoning permits, which the zoning ordinance would, notifies adjacent property owners of pending land use decisions. And so, we're kind of carrying that over to a couple of these other discretionary areas, such as shoreline development permits, minor exceptions, and minor architectural design review. The notification process would also be added to our overheight fence provisions as well. Those automatically go to the planning commission, but we have been in the habit of notifying folks, but the zoning ordinance doesn't require it, so we'll kind of add that into there. As for the revision to the land use application procedures, several changes are being recommended to Section 17.29 of the Application and Fee section. However, the principal change is combining the community development's internal review of application procedures with that of when we send it out to interested agencies. Right now, those are two separate stages. That's not very common, so we're kind of integrating those together rather than having two separate review periods. I think that will go a long way into reducing some of the timeframe we have in reviewing permits. With the incorporation of the proposed revisions, applicants would now know, kind of within that first 30 days, what they have that's incomplete. It's really, it kind of, it creates sort of a confusion on the part of the applicant. I think that's really responsible for a lot of this, the perceived miscommunication. What happens is, an applicant will receive a letter saying their application is complete, and what staff is meaning is your actual application is complete, not being, your project is not approved, but your application is complete. And then, we'll go ahead and send it out to different agencies for their review, and so then they'll get another list of what they perceive to be incomplete items. They'll come back, "Well, you already told me here, my application's complete." So, this simple change will hopefully go a long way in remedying that situation. So, it's staff's belief that these changes will kind of streamline that permitting process and then also help, you know, kind of reduce that perceived ambiguity in the development process. Staff consulted the zoning ordinance of several other municipalities in composing this. We're not doing anything radical by any stretch of the imagination. The planning commission reviewed these proposed at its regular meeting on November 18th, and then again on December 9th, and has made a recommendation to your body that you approve these changes to the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Kevin. Does council have any questions on the staff? Will we open up the... Okay. Open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the changes to Chapter 17? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any discussion or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, there's no further discussion. I'll move to approve the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, Chapter 17 of the Lakeport Municipal Code to improve transparency and streamline the processing of land use development permits.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We passed number one. Next, we have item number B, which is another ordinance zoning change. We're going to conduct a public hearing. We're going to look at, number one, adopting a mitigated negative declaration for the Lakeport Autozone-based autozone project, based on initial study, I'm just going to call it ER, ER 1401, compared for the project dated November 18th, 2015. And the second portion to that is going to be approved, the proposed autozone change ordinance for the Lakeport Autozone Project, ZC 1401, rezoning portion of the project located at 301 Industrial Avenue from I, industrial to C2 major retail. And Kevin, that's going to be your hint.
Yeah, and this one's probably responsible for the bulk of paperwork in your packet this evening. But before I provide an overview, I'd just like to first note that Bob Eink, who's the project engineer, is also here this evening to assist in any questions that the council or public may have. I'd also like to thank the property owner and the project applicant for their incredible patience on this one. This project was submitted more than two years ago, and kind of felt victim to some of our staffing turnovers here. The city had seen four separate planners and three city engineers, so I did want to thank them for their patience in sticking with us on this one. It's a multifaceted project that consists of sort of several interrelated components. In its entirety, the Lakeport Autozone project consists of a tentative parcel map to create four new parcels, zone changes, as noted, from industrial to major retail for the site on proposed parcel number one, which sits at the southeast corner of industrial and South Main Street, a lot line adjustment with a neighboring property on Industrial Avenue, an architectural design review for the proposed 7,842-square-foot retail building on proposed parcel one, a variance to exceed the maximum amount of signage permitted by an additional 50 square feet for building-mounted signage, and then lastly, the consideration of adoption of a mitigated negative declaration for the entire project. The planning commission reviewed the entire project on December 9th, 2015, and other than the variance which they denied, they approved all the project components subject to your council's approval of the zone change before you this evening. The zone change request is technically the only item that your council's being requested to take action on. However, as the zone change is interrelated with all the other components of the project, it's certainly within your purview to take a look at all the components of this project and... project and, and make recommendations, um, amendments as, as you guys see fit. From a logistical permitting standpoint, this was a very complicated project to review. Uh, staff has worked hard to adequately review the necessary components and kind of divide them out as far as, um, which ones are the responsibility of the property owner versus what would fall under the purview of the project applicant. Um, so some of the critical elements of this project is, um, the area surrounded is kind of a mixed commercial area with both, well, actually, three different types of commercial land uses, retail, service, and industrial. Um, the existing general plan designation for the entire site is major retail, whereas the overlying zoning district is industrial. Uh, this kind of happened as a result of the approval of general plan in two thousand and nine. Uh, prior to that, both the zoning and general plan designations were, were the same, they were both industrial. Uh, to the best that I can find, um, the reason for changing the general plan at that time was in regards to a, um, a land use demand survey that was done in compliance with the zoning ordinance updated in two thousand and nine that called for the need for additional retail areas. So, that seems to be, the zoning ordinance doesn't seem that it was updated on it or it was kind of held there as a placeholder to examine as, on a needed basis like we have here this evening. So, staff in reviewing this project for consistency, uh, kind of found that the rezoning of lands right along the South Main Street corridor to major retail, um, is consistent with the general plan and also consistent with other areas that you see around the city. Uh, specifically, other industrial areas along Kimberly Lane and then also Campbell Lane, um, also have major retail, you know, your typical retail commercial areas right up along South Main Street, and then we'll have some more industrial zoning located in the rear area. So this would be consistent with those areas. The proposed parcel would, uh, create four lots, two of which have been developed. Mcatee Marine sits on one of them, and the old Rizika Engineering Building is located on another. Proposed parcel one is proposed to be developed with the new building, uh, for the Autozone project, and proposed parcel four is, uh, is undeveloped and would be eligible for future subdivisions as well. Notable mitigation measures include setbacks for riparian areas, rightaway improvements including roadway construction, curb gutter and sidewalk. Uh, the proposed cul-de-sac has been reviewed and found to meet both the city and fire district standards for emergency personnel. The city engineer worked very hard with the project engineer to ensure that the existing drainage patterns of the site be maintained. Uh, it's, the, the way it sits right now, half of the project to the north flows one way and half of it to the south flows the other way. We've made sure to sort of maintain that existing drainage standard. Stormwater requirements will, um, require a no net increase in stormwater runoff, um, as to kind of offset the result of, um, of new impervious surfacing at the site. Um, just also to make the council aware, and I'm sure you guys are very well aware that the part of this, this specific site at three oh one industrial is also the site of a recent hazardous material spill on January thirteenth. That spill involved approximately twenty-four gallons of mineral oil-containing PCBs, um, as a result of contractors, um, working with PG&E on valley fire recovery efforts. Um, in speaking with the Lake County Environmental Health Division this afternoon, I confirmed that the recent spill, when properly mitigated by PG&E, will not result in any permanent hazardous condition for the site. PG&E has stripped the top layer of the contaminated area and is awaiting results of some additional lab testing to see if they need to remove any more soil from that site. In the meantime, all the existing sort of plastic tarping and fencing that you see there will remain in place to kind of offset any additional contamination that may result as far as, you know, on rain events and things like that. So, it, it looks more ominous than, than it is, is what EH told me. They're, they're doing everything that they need to do to kind of, to kind of keep that from, uh, until they get those test results back. In regards to the architectural design review for the new Autozone building, the planning commission found that the proposed building is consistent with city design standards, contains adequate parking, and meets city landscape and lighting requirements as condition. The planning commission was not able to make appropriate findings to grant Autozone's variance request to allow an additional fifty square foot of building-mounted signage. Uh, Autozone contended that the additional signage was necessary to maintain a competitive advantage or to, you know, competitive equality between the neighboring auto parts retailer O'Reilly's. Based on staff's calculation, although the specified zoning districts allow different allowances, um, at the end of the day, both retailers would be entitled to the same total amount of signage in the amount of a hundred and fifty square feet. With the, so, at that point, the, the planning commission found that the variance was, that there was not the, the necessary information to make the findings for that variance. So with the incorporation of the proposed mitigation measures outlined in the sequel initial study, along with the proposed project conditions, the planning commission found this project to be consistent with the city's general plan, zoning ordinance, subdivision, and other applicable areas of the municipal code, and are recommending approval of this project subject to your council's approval of the zone change. The only negative feedback that staff has received in regards to this project has to do with the appropriateness of locating a new auto parts store directly adjacent to an existing auto part retailer. Our zoning ordinance doesn't prescribe any quotas or any distance requirements for, for like retailers, and I, I would kind of equate this situation very similar to, uh, what you see, uh, in our community as well as in other communities in regards to, you know, fast food stores locating in the same area or even auto malls, you know, you tend to see, you know, conglomeration of, of like uses there. So, that would be, that would be our only response to, to that contention. So, very complicated project, lots of components there, so, uh, any questions I can assist with, and also, like I said, the project engineer is also here to, to assist in any understanding.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you for bringing up the PG&E item. I know we discussed it, uh, by email a couple of times or at least once, a few weeks back, and I was concerned with the ER being affected by that, and it's distinct and different and it's being dealt with, so...
Yeah, I spoke with, uh, Ray today as well, Remensky Environmental Hall, and he said it did, it's ominous looking, but they're just, they're erring on the side of protection, you know, in case of heavy rains, and until they for sure get the lab test back, so, I mean, he says it looks a little overboard, but they just, they want an air, especially with everything that's going on in the county, and the air on the side of caution.
PCBs are bad.
Yeah.
Bad little dogs. Um, David, uh, we should deal with this, uh, as two separate items, uh, as far as the, uh, negative, uh, negative declaration and the ER and...
We should deal with it as one single item, but as two motions.
Two different motions.
That's important, all of them is the same issue.
Okay, but I should open up two separate, uh...
No, one public hearing.
One public hearing, both either.
Yes, in fact, the public hearing is mandatory for the zone change ordinance, because it's not mandatory for the...
For the negative?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, does council have any questions? Okay.
Kevin, with, um, the planning commission's determination that the signage would be the same proposed was Autozone in agreement with that?
We, we had talked with, um, the project engineer on that, and, um, and he said he would certainly take that information back to them, and they would contact us if we'd have, if they had any further issues. Um, I have not heard any additional information from them. My hope is that, I think there was a misunderstanding...
That's what I'm wondering why I didn't thought.
Yeah, I think there was, there was a general thought that they could only have one building mounted sign, um, and when you do read that section of the ordinance, um, it's a little confusing. There's actually a resolution of interpretation that the planning commission has made in the past that, um, that talks about corner lots specifically having the ability to have one sign facing each frontage. And I, I think, I, it's my hope that that's alleviated the situation. But I have not heard any additional requests from Autozone at this time.
So you're saying that they can have a hundred and fifty square feet of signage on each side?
Between, between, they, they have two different types of signage. There's building-mounted signage, which, um, is a maximum of fifty square feet. They can divide that up however they see fit between two signs, but they are also allowed a hundred square feet and a freestanding sign, um, that they have proposed for the project as well. So that's different than O'Reilly's, that the, uh, O'Reilly's, their, their freestanding sign because it's located in a shopping center, has different requirements, but yet their building-mounted sign is allowed to be larger, so, but at the end of the day, they've both come out right around a hundred and fifty square feet.
Total?
Total. I did not plan that.
Those wonderful things, it just works out.
We're not ruling on that particular variance right now.
Correct.
Kevin, could you describe a little bit about what our city's best management practices are in order to mitigate for stormwater discharge?
In regards to this, what, uh, the best management practice has mostly come with the stormwater permit in that we're not allowed to approve projects that increase runoff. So anytime you add impervious surfacing, you are in fact going to be increasing the amount of runoff in there. So what, what they have included, there's a number of different ways you can, you can do that, you know, sort of bio swales or you have, uh, detentions. I get my retention and detention structure, so I'm sure Bob will, will correct me if I, if I use it wrong, but, um, they have included a, uh, retention structure that will be located underneath the parking lot that will kind of collect event stormwater and meter that into the existing stormwater drainage so that overall they will not be increasing the overall amount of stormwater that enters into that drainage system all at once.
So then as the increased drainage then goes towards the south, or we have those setbacks to protect from the riparian areas on our project, um, but as we increase impervious surfaces, I'm just concerned, uh, about setbacks being enough to protect.
Yeah, future, future commercial development, this, these, because this was what sort of made it complicated, is we're, we've got this whole project as part of the parcel map, but the actual improvements that are being proposed are just for parcel one. So Autozone has addressed any runoff stormwater conditions and, and a, a number of different issues in regards to just proposed parcel one. But future commercial development on the undeveloped areas or even new, new construction on the existing developed ones would still also need to incorporate their own stormwater, um, mitigation components.
And that would be done on a case-by-case, parcel-by-parcel level?
Correct. Yeah, per, per project.
Thank you.
Nope, that was my question as well.
Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and, uh, open the public hearing. And I know, Bob?
Yes.
You're here to represent the applicant? Okay, come on up. And can I get you to sign in?
Sure.
Get your last name.
Uh, my name's Bob Eink with RFE Engineering, representing Autozone. And, uh, just to kind of follow up with, with Kevin's statements there as far as, uh, detention and retention and so forth, it is, it is detention that we're proposing to do on the site, and it's really to mitigate the increase in flows from the increased impervious area. Um, so we would mitigate that with the structure under the parking lot before it's outletted to the, um, downstream, uh, storm drain. Um, as far as BMPs, I think one of those questions had come up, and we were, we're working with the city engineer to, uh, develop, and that's more for stormwater quality, and we're, uh, developing, um, uh, fixes for that, uh, for the Autozone project as well. It could be stormwater filters or a combination of some bio swales that will end up with, uh, on that project. But it is just for the, the Autozone project, and as, as each of the other parcels develops, yes, that will be, that's done as a, on a separate, separate level. Um, I, you know, as far as any other, uh, comments, I think, you know, it was mentioned about the variance and so forth. Autozone has not indicated that they want to pursue that any further. They're, they're content with the hundred and fifty square feet of, of signage that's allowed by the city. Um, and, um, yeah, they're, they're anxious to move forward. Kind of appreciate Kevin's input, he's been instrumental in trying to make this happen over, you know, a little over two years that we've been going through this from us, so we appreciate that. Um, but I'm here to answer any other questions. We don't, uh, contest anything that's been put forward at this point. We've gone back and forth with staff on, on the project conditions and the, uh, agreement between the property owner and Autozone and, and the city. Um, we feel comfortable with that.
That's like having a little mineral will slow you down now, so...
Yeah, they, hopefully...
Hopefully by the, by the time all this is done and moved forward, that'll be done too.
Right, yeah, I, I went by the site there earlier for the meeting here tonight, and it does look like they have a, a very good handle on containing that and, and collecting discharge and processing that, that water.
At least, but they should, uh, clean all this up and hand it back to you just like it was, right?
That's, yeah, that would be the best thing, yes.
So, um, you're probably not intimately involved with this, but the question thing that, you know, as the one complaint that came in, why were you, was there like a needs assessment in, uh, in Lakeport that showed or that, uh, you know, questioned the fact that we don't have enough auto parts places in here, and so you, obviously, I mean, they know it's gonna come in here and throw it up without any idea, so they did some kind of needs assessment.
Sure, yeah. Did I get that, uh, question asked a lot? We do, uh, work all over northern and central California, and it is very common for, uh, auto parts stores to be located close, close to each other.
Like casinos in Las Vegas.
Exactly, yes, and where people want to go. Um, but it is, um, there is a lot of work that goes in, uh, from the Autozone, uh, folks, um, that they study the demographics, they look at the needs and so forth, and they, they feel that there's a, a good need for that, um, here locally. They're, they're anxious to come to Lakeport. Uh, they, they opened up a store a couple of years ago in Clear Lake, and they, they want to, uh, make a presence here as well in Lakeport.
Yes, that's actually an example, the Clear Lake stores, and across the street have auto parts, and then block away is, is the other, I think it's all right.
It, it's not unusual, uh, throughout communities to, to have that.
Well, it's just a question that we get, you know, how did you allow that to come in? It's like we haven't anything to do with anything besides zoning, but...
Yeah, part of the free-market system, right? Yeah.
It's tough to regulate that sometimes, too. It's like, you say, well, you have to be four, you know, four lots down, I mean, yeah, it's, it's not feasible. Uh, any other questions? Bob? Well, we appreciate it. I'm, I'm glad that the only issue seemed to be, uh, in the initial report was the signage initially, and that doesn't turn out to be an issue, so...
No, it's a non-issue for, for Autozone.
Well, we appreciate your patience. I know it was a process for you guys, so...
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on the, either the, uh, ER report or the zone change aspect of this? See, that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Uh, we have two different items here to either discuss or to make a motion on, uh, the negative declaration in the ER report, and then secondly, the, uh, zone change aspect of this.
If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to adopt a mitigated negative declaration for the Lakeport Autozone project based on the initial study environmental review prepared for the project and dated November eighteenth, twenty fifteen.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a passing on the ER and the negative declaration. Uh, secondly, we have the, uh, approval of the zone change.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed zone change ordinance for the Lakeport Autozone project, ZC fourteen dash oh one, rezoning a portion of property located at three oh one Industrial Avenue from I Industrial to C two major retail.
I have a motion?
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like we're all done then, Kevin. Um, also, I think at the end of this, I'd like to say, kind of related to Kevin, um, I think in the past year since you've been here, I've had several public comments to posit it, uh, about your coming on with the city. I've had, uh, planning commissioners, I've had even staff here, uh, mention it, uh, that you've done a great job. Um, I think you're, people find you easy to work with, um, and you're a smart guy, and I think you're, uh, you're a big add to the city of Lakeport, so thank you.
Thank you.
No offense to any other staff members.
I'll pass that on to my staff as well. They're certainly major components in all these spaces.
Well, I, I think for most of us, I mean, the first, after I was elected, the first time I sat down with Margaret, uh, for lunch, and she asked me, you know, what are, what are your, gonna be your key issues, and this was one of them.
Yeah.
Was making sure that we could, because I had been on the other side of that counter and had some negative experiences, and that was to change it to where we are now, and we're moving in a great direction. I know Councilmember Turner, uh, as well, said, "Hey, we need to look at these things on the books and make sure that we're treating our people right, making sure that the ordinances are there, that need to be there, and the ones that don't, don't need to be there." With her extensive planning background, I think that's, we're gonna respond to it. It's a city of Lakeport for businesses, it's a much, much nicer tagline than, than what we've heard in the past.
Mr. Mayor, I too wanted to thank Autozone for their patience in this. Uh, it's been a long road, and I really appreciate, and we enjoy working with them, and we're very happy to see that they're persistent and are still here, so, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, and, and Paul Corren also, our, our city engineer deserves a lot of credit here, too. He was able to, to pick this up and... He was able to pick this up and find some things that benefited the project, too, and I think that was very instrumental in sort of keeping them engaged and wanting to stay in Lakeport, so.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll move on to item number seven, council business. We have a community development director. We're going to deal with ordinance introductions, Sonberg Zone Change. Introduce a proposed zone change ordinance for the Gray Sonberg project, ZC 15-03. Schedule a public hearing for a second reading of the zone change ordinance and adopt a adoption of a resolution for a general plan amendment, GPA 15-2, and a mitigated negative declaration based on the environmental review, ER 15-03. And again, Kevin, we'll right back to you.
Yeah, no, this one is a lot shorter. It's just your first meeting. You'll have to do a little bit more on, if you guys set the public hearing there. The primary purpose of this meeting is to set the public hearing date to discuss the planning commission's recommendation to approve a general plan amendment and zone change for property located at 1930 Main Street. Rezoning and redesigning the general plan from resort residential to community commercial, and then resort residential to residential for property located at 10 Queen Anne Way. Both of these addresses are remainder lands associated with the Victorian Village Plan Development there in the south part of town. The proposed general plan amendments and zone change applications are associated with a further parcel map application seeking to divide the property into four parcels. The property fronting Main Street is requesting to be designated to commercial, and the other three proposed parcels, which are access from Queen Anne Way through Phase One of Victorian Village, seek to be designated to single-family residential. The current property owner acquired this property in addition to four lots within the Phase One portion of Victorian Village Development through the bank, and has noted that the changes in market conditions since the original approval of the Victorian Village site have made that project no longer feasible to continue its ultimate full-out development, which was approved for a planned development project of 95 condominium lots. So the only portion of that property that has been developed thus far is Phase One, which includes 14 residential condominium lots. The planning commission during their regular meeting of January 13th approved the proposed tentative parcel mount and associated mitigated negative declaration, and made a recommendation that your council approve the general plan amendments and zone changes proposed here this evening. Your council, however, just like the last project, AutoZone, has the ability to review the entire project, just not just that of the general plan amendment and zone changes, if you so choose. As such, I'm recommending that a public hearing for this matter be set for March 1st. This provides a 20-day legal notice period necessary with subsequent compliance to re-advertise the mitigated negative declaration, which would allow you guys that flexibility, if you so choose, to make any changes to the entire project without having to reschedule another meeting. So that's my recommendation that you guys set a public hearing date for March 1st.
Thank you, Kevin. Does council have any questions? Kevin, who wants to be in there? One question, the existing lots that are there, and I was just looking through to try and catch that on the map here, the existing lots that are there on Victorian Village, are those still zoned resort?
They are currently zoned resort residential with a planned development general, or zoning ordinance overlay, and that would remain in place for the entire Phase One?
For the area that's there.
Correct.
Other than that, I'll open it up to the public. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this ordinance or zoning change? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. We'd be looking at the, bringing this back, David, do we need to mention the date of March 1st?
Yeah, that's the date that is proposed for the public hearing.
Is that the gentleman you wanted to speak on? The next one?
Yeah. So if there's no other discussion, we would be looking to bring this back for a second reading, and we would need to note the date of March 1st on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion coming in. Counsel, I'll move to introduce the zone change ordinance for the Ray Sonberg project, ZC 15-03, and schedule a public hearing for a second reading of March 1st, 2016, of the zone change ordinance and adoption of a resolution for a general plan amendment, GPA 15-02, and mitigated negative declaration based on the environmental review initial study, ER 15-03.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're good. We're going to have it back for a second reading. Next up, we would have your council business, item number B, which would be the finance director, the Dan. We're going to do a review of the mid-year budget and quarterly financial update and approve the budget amendment as recommended by staff for, well, we're going to look at approving the budget amendment.
Take a look. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Some of you might be experiencing a little deja vu, like I was just up here talking about year-end financials for the year end of June 30, 2015. So to allude to the confusion as we're talking about mid-year as of December 31st, 2015, I got a more different suit and changed my color of the slides in my presentation, so hopefully there isn't too much confusion as to what we're talking about. But in my presentation, just like I've done in the past, last year and years prior, we break it up into two sections for mid-year. We talk about how things are looking, and then we talk about how we'd like to adjust the budget moving forward for the next six months. We just had the financial year-end, and not a lot has changed from our outlook and the activity that's happened with the city over the last six months. I'd like to move through that component briskly, pausing for any questions that you may add along the way. But everything still looks more or less as we anticipated, so there's not a lot of updates to give there. I will say that the cap was completed and issued, the city's financial statements last week, and we're receiving a copy of that shortly, as well as auditor's communication to you as a board. There were no subsequent changes that the auditor requests to recommend to us, so what I presented to you two weeks ago is the information that's had in those statements. So moving along, we'll talk a little bit about the policies found in the budget document that guides city manager, staff, as far as spending the appropriate funds found in the budget. Talk about where we've been over the last six months, where we are currently, and where we expect to be in the next six months. Then we'll talk about the budget adjustments city managers recommended and go through those. Talk a little bit about the schedule for next year's budget. We're starting earlier this year because of the approach we're taking, still focused on goal setting and showing how the numbers translate into activity and action. So some of you, hopefully all of you are aware that there is a goal strategic planning session coming up at the end of this month with staff, council, program, to kick that here. If you have any questions of staff that are here about budget numbers for projects, where they're at with the different projects, any questions you have about the activities of any department, staff are available here to answer those questions, and we'll keep a brief, brief moment, so if anything comes up, this is what we ask. So in general, the budget policies are fairly straightforward. They're found within the document and the appendices. They are a guiding framework as to how we approach the budget, what authority levels are found as far as appropriations and expenditures, how we estimate revenues, so on and so forth. They may be found in the budget for a number of years now, so there's not a lot of updating to be here. But we do hold to these policies and, crazy man, no, we do hold to these policies and have found no reason to amend them or change them recently. You shall have a copy packet, the quarterly update for this year so far as the December 31st, 2015. You'll notice that our general revenues, the general fund, the top 10 performers are down from where they were the same time last year. And at first glance, you'll probably say, well, that's not going to be true, 14% lower revenues compared to the same time last year. But if you dig deeper into the numbers, you'll see that we are actually more or less on pace, if not exceeding where we thought we'd be this year. A lot of that 14% difference is from one-time money that we got last year that are coming in this year that makes a difference. And there's also the late payments, those timing differences going on right now, particularly as I talked about last time, like the wine down triple flip, this state is not allocating the reconciliation of our sales tax, like that happened in the past, the wine down. So they're getting it a little bit, little bit, little bit every time they pay, and then there's going to be a trip at the end of this fiscal year to close up the triple flip. And so that lump payment, which was smaller than we anticipated, is counted, and used to count in the form of in our property tax check account, and it's not happening anymore. So we're waiting to see when this is going to happen. We're going to have a meeting with our sales tax analyst next month, and hopefully they'll have an update as to how that payment's supposed to happen. Specifically, we would have seen some of that here, and we're not, so we're waiting for that. So if you take deeper into the numbers, 14% down compared to a year ago is really not the case. And even in economic environment like we're experiencing right now, where we rely on things like gas prices as a sales tax generator, knowing that gas prices are really low right now, it's about 70% of our sales tax volume, we're getting bumps in other areas, most likely from activities we made in the fires. So we had a lot of activity in Lakeport, or eating at the restaurants, or shopping at retail establishments, or staying in hotels. So I think that's what we're seeing. I think that's helped to kind of stabilize what we thought was going to be a little bit of a downer as far as general revenues, particularly on the sales tax side. We're seeing that we're actually coming in a little bit better than we expected. Measure I is the best proxy for us to make that call. The Bradley Burns 1% sales tax is a little different because of triple flip. It's hard to get a grasp as to what's our true revenue picture. Measure I doesn't have that kind of funny business at the state level. Whatever we're collecting here gets remitted to us. So when we see that it's not 3% from a year ago, those are encouraging numbers to look at.
Sorry, polite way to say it, funny business. Dan, where's the TOT going?
TOT is down, is down from last year. And we were hoping for a good-sized bump because of all the activities with fires, but I just spoke to Karen Mack yesterday, and she was in. And even though her revenues are up big time because of her occupancy, a lot of her, the people staying with her are federal state employees, and it's not subject to TOT.
Right, yeah.
And she's also doing long-term, you know, greater than 30-day arrangements, which are also not subject to TOT. So her TOT numbers are more or less flat than the year before. I will update the council and say that we are, we have conducted audit of our hotelers for the last year, we identified two that are behind in their revenues of TOT, so we ordered a more, it was a bit of a quote, severe audit, not a severe audit, but a more in-depth audit of those establishments to identify just how far behind they are, if they are before trying to...
She was carrying a mic, so.
More than severe audit. Another encouraging trend in general revenue is property tax. So last year, and I reported to you just two weeks ago, the year end of June 30, 2015, property taxes down, and we treated that to, what I refer as, cost adjustments. Now we're not, our first check, we get three of them a year. It was 10% higher than what we thought we were going to be at this time of year after calculating, trying to factor in that. So I would think that we are probably through the cost adjustment window. The check we get in June will look very similar to the check we just got, and then there's a true lump payment by accounting on August 30th or July, depending on when we get it out. So it appears that we might be through that more, back on the more normal path as far as profit tax for the city. Now, everyone knows that we don't get a lot of profit tax that's collected to the city. Most of it goes to schools, and a large chunk goes to the county. So we get a little bit over 10 and a half percent, whatever dollar, collected for any resident, who also probably is going to see it by the book. So that's 10 and a half percent, that's back to us, distributed to the other property tax colleges. Department of Specialties are on pace with where we expected. The city manager did identify some cost savings after having her mid-year budget reviewed at departments in certain areas, and so she's recommending re-appropriating those savings as we see in the moment. We talked about the budget adjustments recommended. With the exception, I hate to keep single-ing up the city attorney, because he's just a rogue agent out there, just spin. We made a calculation error of the cost of just having general counsel, and so his, it's not his, he had very little control over the city attorney budget, but his budget appears to be higher than it should be because of that. And then we also incurred costs in special medical services, most of which were performed by our city council, or the city attorney. Those were related to personnel matters and things of that nature. So unexpected kind of things that come up and we have to deal with in the moment. And so the city manager took a look at the budget for, not only the city attorney, but it's other departments that were involved with those issues, and was able to recommend some changes to appropriations that didn't have quite impact as just a string increase to the city attorney provision. So I know I keep drawing them out every time I come up here, but it's not him, it's us. We're just trying to figure out how to appropriately budget for that activity here as well as what we did. So, but he's been very good. They're coming right up on the running schedule as far as the cost for attorney, which is still a great savings for us compared to that years ago. For the water sewer enterprises, we're seeing on the water side taking a beating hit to revenue resulting from conservation measures. We expected to be up about 15% from the prior, and we see that on the water side, we're a little bit lower than this. I believe it could seem to report.
It's down further in the...
Oh, it's perfect. So with that, it's not particularly alarming to us. We kind of expected this was going to happen, and it's been a wet fall, and so that's probably now contributing to less use of water in general. But on the flip side, on the sewer side, I reported this for the year end of June 30, we were up a lot more in the revenue resulted from sewer charges than we anticipated. We thought we would be at maybe 20% higher from the prior. Last year, we were up 44%. This year, so far, for the first six months, even though in reporting we're up about 5.9%, if you dig into those numbers, the amount related to just sewer charges is up 33%. So again, we were expecting to be between 15 and 18%. We're at 33%. So we are still looking into what's going on. I believe it's related to commercial activity, but the city manager's been working on a strategy that we may want to recommend council on how to address that, knowing the revenues are coming in stronger than anticipated. What can we do to relieve the rate pair of that? So probably a multi-pronged approach. That's going to be recommended in the next few weeks, month or so.
Could that include a rate study? Or are you just...
It probably won't include a full-blown. It might include a small rate study just for the rate consultant who did the analysis before to say, okay, these are the variables that have been changed, and that's generating these revenues for you. But we haven't decided if that's necessary yet. We're still kind of piecing together what the approach might be. That might be possible. What we will be doing for, best practices we've picked, if we do for a rate study at the end of the fourth rotation in about a year and a half. Every five years, it's recommended to do one, whether you docked, if you rate it, you not, just to see, are you generating enough revenue to support your operations and capital and all that? So you've got to kind of balance that consideration as well. If we're going to do a rate study, you know, the current rotation period. But it is possible, it's possible you might do a small study just to try and understand better what's going on with these sewer side.
If we, if you looked at that and determined that, you know, maybe like the last, put it out there, last rate bump maybe isn't needed, if you go there, do you lose the opportunity it out there, last rate bump maybe isn't needed, if you go there, do you lose the opportunity then to do that down the line?
It always depends on how you do it, and David could chime in as well. But if you were to just simply delay, say, delay it a year, then you could just continue it a year. But if you were to say, we're going to cancel it, then that would probably.
Our recommendation probably coming back is that we do a smaller study, but just focusing on that revenue while we have that, and then possibly giving us time so we probably postpone the next rate hike and take a look at the study to make sure that, is that needed or not?
Which gives you another year to kind of look at.
Right, and then bring that to council with the study's done to make sure that we're not overcharging. You know, we definitely don't want to do that. So we would be bringing that study back to council.
By that time too, we'd be coming up on our five-year, going back out to 2018. So it would be the good timing to figure out exactly where we are.
And we have to consider all the USDA projects and the amount that we have to have in terms that they require us to have. So we'll take all that into consideration and see if there's any alleviation that's possible, but we'd like to probably do a smaller study to see that.
Just quick update on redevelopment. The solution is ongoing. The Coors Act Board recently adopted the most recent recognized obligation payment schedule with rocks. The state law has changed somewhat that now we're doing that annually, it's mostly twice a year. And soon we'll be exploring our last vinyl rocks, which should put us into a much more predictable, steady path forward as far as the redevelopment is supposed to. We still have all those bond courses dedicated toward downtown Main Street. So that probably is going to take a while and report to those discussions with council a little bit forward. And then overall, back to the general fund, everything is structurally balanced, like the policies of the budget states. You're still anticipating revenues conservatively, and departments are doing a good job controlling their expenditures. And I don't know if Margot's saying anything about the mid-year budget being with departments, but I got a good impression that things are going well out there in department land and that, so we'll be bringing that to the coal and so on and so forth.
Yeah, department has, I gotta give them a lot of credit. They're very good at keeping track of our expenses and I think we're doing well with our expenses. And as you'll see from some of the transfers we're able to move from other areas that we think we're going to be okay beginning of the year and cover some of the extra expenses that, unexpected expenses that came up.
Like to whip out this paragraph from time to time, just illustrating our fiscal situation with the general fund. The last several years, we were running surpluses, adding to fund balance and following the budget policy just to actually put a city. We only appropriate any kind of surplus like that for one-time uses, so it's not meant to support ongoing costs expansion. So this year and the last, the manager made recommendations to utilize that, those passive plus for one-time uses, postpone the capital projects. So last year, some of that money went to purchasing docks in Island Park. We did a few extra road projects, and the same goes for this year. And we're looking to even explore, carry over the patch truck for public works so that they can have a more effective use of materials and equipment to face the road dangers.
That will be coming up in your future in the agenda because of general revenue, I don't think you can do as many roads as we've done in the past. So the patch truck would be really important to make sure we keep the potholes patched as best as possible for just doing it hand mix. So they're going to be bringing that back to.
That vehicle will be really busy.
Pardon?
That vehicle's making.
Yes, yes. We have one that's falling apart and there's major repairs that need to be done to keep it going, so that'll be something that happens in the future.
This chart here is also found in your board report, just illustrating differences in our top 10 revenue sources in the general fund compared. So here's why it's a little bit similar. Here are the department expenditures we just talked about. All right, this is how we reconcile to overall citywide expenditures. So we have a number of different funds all doing different things. But the big funds in the city, which of course you don't find, water sewer, those are worth a lot, salaries, benefits located, which are a major component of citywide expenditures. So this chart, this thing appears designed to help take that all into context, how the general fund, how the market land expenditures relate to the overall. Both found in the cap or as well as in the budget is the general fund balance and how that is appropriated. So the majority of the general fund balance is meant to be as a general reserve. But in years past, it was used for appropriate capital projects and other items. And this year, we have a couple of things that we also hold like for the general fund. One is the asset portfolio that this company received. So that's housed in the general fund, and some of it was used last year to buy this vehicle. And they use some as well to help find things like a national layout. What was it on the state? Oh, Halloween, probably conscious. But all in all, those are meant as a revenue stabilization or a general reserve. And then here's a chart that comes up as a shield, referenced, just illustrating what's been going on in the water enterprise and sewer enterprise as well. Redevelopment, of course, we miss you so much. But we're following both the administrative cost budget as well as what the rocks have allocated for service. So there it is, it was right on the part of you. And then I like to report on how we're doing as far as billing for our, well, up to this point, was just residential for trash. We are now assuming a commercial role for billing as part of the new contract. So you, talking with local businesses, you'll probably hear that they receive those from us, and have received those from Lakeport disposal, that billing function for commercial pickup will be coming from this dealer group. So the first bill, whether we see that, is going to be the one being generated for 50% or 10%, it should be in their mailboxes, I have 20, that'll be covering the first month of January. So from here on out, the city has assumed that function. The only thing that the city won't be doing are billings for non-megatourne type of pickup services. So those will still be done between the homeowner and customer. The aid is required as part of our ordinance, the city is going to be billing for. All right, any questions about where we've been and where we are right now? Can we just, you know, direct to the budget? When we sit down, maybe we talk about mid-year at the staff level with the city manager. This is a great opportunity for us to go, okay, where are things coming in and how can we quickly quantify things to get us through the year, or to realize cost savings and reappropriate, or just realize cost savings, stock it away? Or we'll make a number of decisions based on new information that we've had since we started the budget process nine months ago. So we took all that into consideration. City manager met with each department and eventually talked about their needs, how things were going, and was able to identify areas of need that we could address based on areas where we were realizing cost savings. And with the department head help identifying those, the city manager did together a recommended budget adjustment, amended to the current budget that would satisfy those needs. The city manager does have authority to adjust the budget at the, what we call it, micro level. So anything between small accounts, she could move money around depending on the need. And she can't increase the net appropriation in the A fund. So we call that fund level control. So she can't say, well, the general fund appropriated 4.5 million this year, I want it to be 4.6. She can't do that without the council approval. But she can move money around in the general fund depending on the, as the situation requires. And the only adjustment she's made to date was in the housing activities funded by the general fund. So we were planning to hire a part-time housing specialist, in fact, we started discovering last March. And then as we got through this year, we were thinking that it's not going to happen, it's probably better just to go to a consultant. So she moved money out of salaries to put a special service to cover.
The municipal grant firms, they come to run housing grants.
So that was the only adjustment made as of December 31st. Then the first meeting in January, the council did appropriate new monies for the bathroom project. So that's not entirely reflected here because it's meant to be December 31st, the type that we know was the second time the budget was officially adjusted. This is now the recommended budget adjustment for the whole PTO rule. We're anticipating 1.3 million in additional revenue for other banks and sources, or I mean by that, what we're anticipating to get that USDA loan, those proceeds this year for the acquisition of that real property that we're going to use it for the police mission. So we thought this project would have been downing last year, or we would have received a money last year. Had we got closer to the year and had the budget adopted, it became clear that that wasn't going to happen. But we haven't really done much on that because of, well, because of delays really at the USDA level. So we haven't moved on it much terribly. Now we're saying, it's mid-year, that's right, guys, and those proceeds are, eh, and I'm just saying, it's a highlight, they will by check 30. So that's one of the biggest components. But there are other elements, both revenue, true revenue that we anticipate coming in, some of which is reimbursement from the county for the city's costs and responding to both property value. The city did incur significant cost, sending public works crews, police, and as well as redevelopment staff to assist the county's efforts inside U.S. fires. We done our due diligence, submitted claims, waited for the county to raise due diligence to process those, and hopefully we'll see that that will come in shortly. And then mostly everything else after that is small and explainable. The only other thing I see that is of any significant nature is we anticipate getting some state mandate reimbursed, in fact, we already received it when we get back cost, mandated cost reimbursed from the state going back to, I don't know, 2004.
Which can change the legislation, and we don't get any of that in the future, so.
But we're getting these checks, and say, we're not anticipating, frankly, never thought we'd see them, I never, but we haven't gotten some of it, so we wanted to reflect that. The appropriations, that's the manager's making a total increase of budget by 500,000. So the difference between what we anticipated revenue and other financing sources and increased appropriation is 845,000. So we're anticipating more revenue, more other financing sources than appropriations. And some of it goes hand in hand, like the first, the remaining previous PD station, 202,000, that's part of the whole budget of 1,009, 1,095,000 for the whole PD project. So we've only spent so far about 875,000 or so, not as much as purchase, probably. Now it's time for the repayment. And that budget is still, has just lasted, maybe it'll be that much, but that's what we're going to inform the council that the project is, could cost. So we're just asking for that appropriation to, much of it will still be that if the council asks for the project was for. But there's a correlation with the increased appropriation, increase in either the revenue or something like those proceeds. And again, the city manager did identify about 15,000 in cost saves throughout the city, and then made recommendations to re-appropriate those ones to areas where there was more. This charting right now and what funds are affected by the recommended budget adjustment. Focus on the general fund. We anticipated a budgetary surplus of about 46,000. With the recognition of additional revenue and the approval proposed, the recommended increase to appropriation, we're looking to increase that surplus, the budgetary surplus to 96,000. And that gives us a little bit of comfort in knowing that there might be a cushion there if revenues don't come in, as we just, they look good now. And every belief, confidence will look good, and there was nice timing, a cushion there. And departments do, again, a great job controlling the costs, and I would expect all departments to come under budget by here, which will help further bolster the general fund bottom line. The remaining funds affected here, our special revenue funds and water sewer. On the enterprise side, or I'm sorry, the expansion side of water, we're simply asking for an increase to appropriation and recognized revenue. There's not a lot of activity in the expansion side, however, there was a few property owners from Alperal Drive who wanted to be connected to Seawater and pay the expansion fees for that, and we performed the work, and so just wanted to recognize and welcome that to our happy family.
I want to comment, some of the savings too has been that we haven't been able to fill positions that we need to fill, so there's some savings at work for this time.
And then these are departments, how they're affected by the recommended budget adjustments. See how money is being either moved from one major category to another, or how it's just being increased in one category. Any questions about the recommended budget adjustments? So our 1617 budget schedule is aggressive and robust, and starting bright and early come a few weeks from now, in February 26, city management will meet with council to discuss goals and accomplishments, and I'll really get the gears turning towards development on the next year's budget. We expect to have department meetings in March, start the draft of the budget document in April, and have first, first meeting this week. So we're moving along pretty quickly, and we've learned a lot of times this, artists got them all ready to go, pounding knuckles, pounding fingers on the table, things here are finally crazy, but it'll move quickly. I mean, it'll be a lot of work, but staff has taken a good shot so far with this process, so looking forward to doing that. Beyond that, are there any questions about, as I was just saying, any questions you want to ask the departments, specifically projects or activities, if you were curious about what they're involved?
The only question that I, when you said you had a million dollars from a loan, and it's counted as revenue, it always like.
Yeah, that's why I say it's other financing sources, so that I did not count as revenue. When I booked that, it's going to be loan for something. We did earn it, which is, that's a mechanism of finance. But things like reimbursements and stuff, we wouldn't count that as revenue because there's no guarantee we're going to get it, thanks to the law. We do, great, that helps offset our cost, we treat it as revenue because the fact that the city did earn it by providing the services, we're just hoping we can accomplish it before we go reimburse for it. So yeah, the proceeds, that's not bad.
Now, you said earlier in the water enterprise fund that you were down. Didn't we have discussions early on that you had projected diminished usage, and you were still surprised by the level of diminished usage based on El Nino or what?
Yeah, I, you know, things have been so crazy with the drought conditions, and now we're getting, with water, that it's not getting surprising anymore, but yeah, when I looked at it, we expected it. I don't know if those would be exactly the hit, but we kind of have in the back of our minds that, you know, revenues are going to be hit. We certainly see that across Ford, across the state with most water ruins and utilities. And the only difference right now for us is we're not scrambling to try and adjust. So some are, some are trying to make up that revenue. And we anticipated it. It's more severe as we thought, but a lot of our rate increase was for ongoing capital projects beyond USDA. And right now, we're not projecting to do any of those right now until we see. And right now, we're not projecting to do any of those right now until we see rates stabilized to more of what we thought they should be. That cushion gives us a lot of flexibility to respond with not putting more of the onus on the repayment. So we can ride this out for a while, see what takes us, and then maybe a year or two when it's time to hear another rate statement, see if we're in a new normal, or if we just survived a bump in our, different.
So when you talk about a new normal, you're talking about people that have instituted certain conservation measures and found that they can live within those parameters, and they continue to do so. And so there might be a new normal, which, which in many ways would be good, but as far as revenue, it's not quite.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking more along with the state is going to do. They talk about this being a new normal when the drought is officially declared over. I would imagine the state doesn't change anything and still mandates some kind of water ration, whatever, to claiming it's a new normal. So if that mindset, I would expect it to carry forward on the local level. And maybe some people are cool, taking a shower every other day, or once a week, or I've been hearing stories about, I would not encourage that.
I know she stayed locked on.
You know, the state released a report today that, for the most part, California was reaching its goal of conservation until December, since the heavier rains hit, and it actually went down the other direction, which was interesting because it's still the middle winner. But I think that they were making the point that they were still suggesting that people follow their drought-prescribed water use, and I think you're right, they're setting themselves up to make that, it will become just what California does.
Yeah, and it's, you know, something we're going to ride up and see where we wind up in a year or so, if the drought is declared over, and we need a little more rain, I think, before we're anywhere near that discussion. But also, I think our customers and our citizenry need to be aware that we have the resources of water to be demanding. We're more fortunate that way because we sit on a giant lake. Our groundwater reservoirs have not suffered like some others have. So those resources, resources for our citizenry aren't there and available. It's just a matter of policy, kind of where the political winds are blowing, that kind of dictate how we're performing. So we'll see what comes in the next year or so.
I know last year in December, January, I would say, I was still hauling hoses around the yard, trying to keep plants alive in our yard, versus this year, I didn't even look at the house in two months.
There's so much water, yeah.
Yeah, it's just different. Different out there. Any other questions? Thank you, Dan. One other thing I'd like to mention, and I know I had to get on the county, you're going to enjoy this probably in the future, the county budget, or something I was trying to look up for the fire district that they had mentioned, and I have the toughest time navigating, looking at the county budget, looking at our budgetary, you know, statements and stuff, it's much easier to follow.
Good.
Yeah, I want to compliment Dan, the whole change he's done to our budget and the transparency that we've been able to do because of, you know, the work that Dan's done, and our goal is to make as transparent as possible, and I think he's really worked at that over the last few years.
Makes it much easier for the average person to be able to look at it and at least, you know, attempt to navigate it, so.
Good, and we're working on annual reports. Council member Sheila is assisting us with that, and he's going to be, he's going to have a very, I don't know what the term would be, not active role, but you're going to be here to talk about some stuff. And that report's really designed to be much more, even more readable than what we have. Very, very brief, but it will say, here's what you got from the resources for it. And so, before getting that going, we got a report.
Yeah, that was when Mayor Parlay had mentioned that at the time, that was, that worked out really well. I think we keep expanding on that. It's a really easy read, and it really helps people, I mean, it's something that they can actually be interested in, and that may take them further to look at even, you know, even the caper that you produce is still very, very easy, easy read for someone to follow. That's, that's great.
We all enjoy it late at night.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dan?
Thank you.
Good reveal. I'd like to see if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak either on the budget review or the proposed budget amendment. Seen any? I'll bring it back to council. We had a budget review, but we need to look at approving the amendment for fiscal year 2015-16. Anyone who'd be interested in that?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the fiscal year 2015-16 city budget as recommended by staff.
Second? I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? Looks like we're getting Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, up tonight, we have.
I didn't get that.
That was me.
Oh, you just really want the attention.
Shot's fired.
I am number C, police chief. We're going to authorize the city manager, we're going to look at authorizing the city manager to budget, or hire a 12th police officer position as requested.
Thank you, mayor, and mayor and council members. What you have before you tonight is a request for an over, pre-filling or an over-staffing of one officer in addition to what you currently have budgeted for, which is 11 sworn positions. And although, you know, my goal would be to, at some point, get that position back on a permanent basis, the request tonight is to authorize that I can fill that position from March 15th through the end of the 1617 budget year. So that's about 15-month time period. As you saw in the staff report, again, our current staffing is 11 full-time sworn and one part-time sworn position as of right now, which is significantly less than what we had going back to the mid-'80s, 30 years ago. We were at 12 sworn full-time, and then for a period of 14 years, from the mid-'90s to 2009, we were at 14 full-time sworn officers. Then we were down to nine in January of 10 with the economic issues that hit California and also lost in some other state and federal revenue for law enforcement that we had secured for a number of years during that time. So basically, over the last five years, we've been working with either nine or 10 full-time sworn officers. Although council last December, I believe it was, authorized us to go back to 11 sworn so we could restore our full-time detective, which we did end up restoring the detective about six months later, but we've yet to be able to keep that 11th position filled. So as of today, I'm back down to nine full-time sworn positions. And then in addition, we've got two and a half full-time equivalent that are out on injuries right now, so that's also impacting my ability to cover the patrol schedule, which is our most essential service in the department, is, you know, having sufficient patrol coverage to protect the community and also to, you know, try to provide enough coverage to keep the officers safe down on the street. And one thing I do want to, want to mention, and because, you know, the crime and the workload hasn't gone down since, you know, the '90s or even January of 10, we're still seeing significant issues. And as an example, in 2014, we had the highest number of arrests that we've had in any 10-year period prior to that, which was over 600 arrests in 2014. And I do want to commend, you know, my police staff and the officers and all the support personnel for, you know, continuing and doing a great job to make this city safe, which I believe we have, you know, kept the city safe over the past five years. And, you know, that couldn't have been done without, you know, the officers being dedicated to go out there and continue to do the work, even though we had less police personnel. So I, you know, things important to note, I want to commend them for that dedication and staying out there and continuing to do everything we need to do to keep the city safe. So as you know, we just did an extensive recruitment process for, to try to find local candidates to fill some of these positions because we're finding that it's getting more and more difficult to recruit police-trained people from outside of the area. Lake County does not have a pool of people that have police training, that have a police academy, that are ready to be hired and put on the street, but we do have a lot of people that are interested in that and would go to the academy but haven't had the opportunity. You know, it's, it's hard to keep people from out of county. They may come and get trained and work a couple of years, but, you know, if they're not from here and they're from another area, and those areas are paying twice what we're paying, it's very difficult to keep them working here. So one of the things that I wanted to do was, you know, try to, you know, focus more on local candidates that have grown up here and are used to the economy here and, and want to stay here. So that's one of the things we're working on. And, but the other problem is, you know, if I have three positions as of tomorrow morning, I can't send all three positions to the academy because that's going to tie me up not having people on the street enough. So we also need to run another recruitment, see if we can find some people that are already trained as well, get them hired a lot quicker. So, so essentially, you know, that's, that's request is to authorize the hiring authority, which is the city manager, to, to fill up this 11th position for the next 15 months so we can make sure we have sustained positions and staffing. And, you know, with that, it's really hard to predict the cost. You know, it's going to cost anywhere between zero and just under $91,000. And I can't give you a better number than that right now because I don't know how often it's going to fluctuate. I have information right now that we may lose three people in 2016, so as, you know, as we hire a 12th and somebody leaves, they may drop down into an 11th or 10th position. So, so that's going to fluctuate during that time period, but we want to make sure to give you the, the maximum cost, which is figured out by our finance department, is that $90,603. I have no concern about it impacting the police budget between now and June 30th of this year because I've got salary savings from positions that have been budgeted the entire year. So I don't think there's any concern there. And then in working with the city manager, you know, throughout, in anticipation of have that fell during the 1617 budget year, I don't, I don't feel there's going to be any significant impact to the city budget overall and, or the city's ability, whether it be police or any other department, to provide services we need to provide. So that's really the best I can explain that right now. I think, I think we're okay. I think we, you know, we need to, we've got to do a couple of plans to make sure that we have enough police staffing in place. So this is one plan that I think is affordable and that we can do, and hopefully it will help. So with that, I think that's, I've covered it, unless council has any specific questions about the staff report or anything I've said at this point.
Thank you, chief.
Any questions or comments after?
Okay. I think we'll go ahead and open this up to the public, and I think we should ask Val off first, he has been patient, sat here through an hour and 45 minutes.
Oh, it was educational, but I'm sure you all learned a lot too. My name is Val McMurty, and I'm happy to be here to talk to this new mayor and the city council. I live at 650 Espinon Street, and I've lived in Lakeport about four years. And before I moved, I should mention that Espinon Street now has almost all seniors, and most of them are widows. And so they do talk to me about how many times the police come by every night and how safe they are. And so this is an important topic. So what I would like to mention is that before, before moving to Lakeport, I carefully researched Lakeport. And you know, you have one of the best managed cities in Northern California. And I can say that from having researched how many, over the long term, how well the city councils have done in Lakeport. And so I very happily moved here, and my wife and I have been extraordinarily happy for Lakeport, wouldn't want to go anywhere else, and I've lived in a lot of small communities. So having said that, with regard to police protection, I wanted to mention, I really would like you to look into a few things because I think you have some serious problems coming up. The first thing I would like you to do is go on the controllers' website, the state controllers' website. There's an interactive website, if you haven't been on it, where you can look up how much a Lakeport police officer makes, and you can compare it with other cities. And you know, you're at the absolute bottom. That's why you can't get people graduating out of the academies. $61,000 a year, after you take taxes out, you're not going to get an academy graduate to come to Lakeport. And the reason is, your salaries are way too low. So you have an imminent quality and quantity problem. I have that problem. Because you see, not all beans that you count when you do the budget are actually equal. Because if a city can't protect its citizens, that's one of its prime responsibilities. The second one is, do you pay your obligations? So when you research a city that is well-managed as this one, what I'm going to urge you to do is go on that website yourself. Find out, do you are not paying enough, the city is not paying enough to get minimum qualified officers. Now, there are a number of related topics here. You need to increase the salaries to around $68,000 so that you get a quality officer coming in, not the absolute worst that can't find a job somewhere else. Next, why are you reducing the number of officers from 14 to nine? Ineffective officers, below that. Because what happens over the long term, the criminals find out. And then this well-managed city will have a lower reputation. It's a critical function. The beans are not equal. So there are two related factors that you really need to know about. When every city in the country is finding out, the police officers wear out earlier than other people. In other words, if you're working behind a desk and a police officer is out there on the front line, what city after city is discovering is they wear out. In other words, you can only run down the street so many hundred times and tackle a fleeing felon, or wrestle a drunk driver, until when you're 62 or 63 or even 55, they're worn out. And so you have to include that in your budget. You can't just ignore it as if it doesn't exist. Every city is facing that. And this city council, to maintain that reputation, needs to be realistic about that. Another major factor is after almost 20 years of the state CDC, Department of Corrections, being under federal supervision to, and required to reduce its prison population from 200% of the rated beds to just 140%, so it isn't cruel and unusual punishment, has now dropped the problem back on the counties. So that you have felons staying in the county jail for up to three years. And you know what? The recidivism rate for first-time offenders is right out through the roof, above 67%. Because the state doesn't do anything by way of corrections, and the county can't afford to do that. to do that. So all of your citizens here are going to be at risk while you reduce the number and the quality of the police officers and the police force. I really want you to look into it. Because when your citizens, your friends, your neighbors, your mother has a break-in, their things are stolen, or there's a robbery, and that goes all over the community, that's going to be a serious problem for Lakeport. So I have a little saying, of course it was funny about the water, because this relates to the budget too. So to save the water, I had some trees die and a lot of decorative grape plants. I had to just let them die. But I did notice my bill, my water bill went way down, you know, so. But police protection is a lot more important than the water bean. So I really want you to take a look at that. Look at what you've got coming at you in the future. The fact that you've reduced the police force by over 30%. At the time, you should be increasing it. Increase the number of officers to at least 13. $68,000 minimum salary, so you can get at least minimally qualified new officers. So, thank you, you know, for your patience.
Well, I gave you a little leeway there, Val, because you were, you got to weigh through the whole meeting timelines. But we are having our goal-setting here in a few weeks on a Friday and we're, you know, maybe that's something we need to look at in that procedure.
Yeah, I would urge you to look on the Controller's website. Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate your patience, weighing through the meeting. Do I have any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Gary Baser. I live at 39 Crawford Court in Lakeport. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Lakeport Peace Officers Association. I have kind of two-pronged approach that I'd like to take. First of all, I'd like to state that the Peace Officers Association is in support of our chief of police in requesting this 12th position. A little bit differently, we would like to see that position as a permanent position. We believe that two things are needed. One, we need the additional officers on the street to protect the citizens. There's a great increase that we've seen that the chief has mentioned in the crime rate and things that we have seen here locally. We are seeing people moving into this area because of rents that are changing, houses that are becoming older, whatever the redevelopment issues are. But we are seeing people move into the city that we haven't seen before that we don't like. And I know there are other officers that feel the same way as I do. These are causing more petty theft crimes. We're seeing more transients on the street. We're seeing more crimes against persons. And this is exactly what we need to be combating. Not having enough resources in the department to cover things like the narcotics task force, game task force on a basis that puts these officers in touch with other agencies in the county to give us the intelligence that we need, the personnel that we need to go after some of these places and houses where drugs are being sold. The number of houses where drugs are being sold, we know about, is increasing, but we don't have the resources to actually go after them. And that's a problem because we're seeing that those are developing additional petty thefts, additional crimes in the city. Secondly, the second prompt of this is the fact that the difficulty in hiring those officers, as Mr. McMurty said, being able to hire good officers that we can bring into the county. You have on your starting officer pay, you can be someone who delivers beer from a beer truck and make more money than an officer starting here in Lakeport. That's unfortunate. And, you know, we're seeing some of our newer officers that are looking to leave because of wages. And I know that that's not everything, but it is certainly a big part of it that they are looking at. And I think we have to be creative in how we approach being able to get some of those new officers here, whether it be with regards to benefits or other issues that we have. We need to take a look at that. We need them to take a look at making a shift in our way of thinking with public safety. We don't want to see, and I mean the Peace Officers Association, we don't want to see the city degrade to a situation where there are other cities in our county and other cities across the nation that are having problems that they can't get out of. So I recommend that we take a look at that. The city council takes a look at how they can look at public safety as an issue in the future because I believe it is definitely an issue both for the citizens and for the officers. We need two officers on every shift. There is new laws and new policies coming out with regards to how officers conduct themselves with use of force, how officers use the tools that we have been given in the past such as tasers, where we can't use them anymore for passive resistance, which means we have to go hands-on. And if we have to go hands-on with an individual, that means the possibility of getting injured is greater. We have to have two officers to be able to handle that at least. In a lot of cities, they're able to put more than one or two officers on a shift to be able to back up each other and not have to have those use-of-force issues. So I urge the council to take a look at that and support the police department in their efforts to increase our resources. Thank you.
Thanks.
I know what Gary said there. I've been here since 99. I've been a longtime resident of Lake County or Lakeport, but, and I live right in the Polk-Armstrong area, which I have one of those drug dealers right up my street that I see them run back and forth. And they've been arrested a few times, but they seem to come right back out, which isn't an issue of the Lakeport police. It's more just the way the system's set up right now. I know several times you kind of want to do something that would put you in jail. And it's very frustrating with those situations. But I think the flavor of Lakeport has changed a little bit with some of the, I don't know, you know, what it is that's created it, but it does seem a little bit, little bit more dangerous. I don't think it's overly dramatic. We still live in a very nice community, but it is a little bit different. Is there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing done, I'll bring it back to the council to discuss.
I just have a couple of things. I met with retired chief Tom Ingstrom last week and had a discussion regarding this. And even, you know, going to what Mr. McMurty said and Sergeant Baser, when he was chief and had 14 officers and just due to normal vacations, training and injuries due to job another, even at those times, it was sometimes difficult to keep a fully staffed, you know, police force on hand for the requirements. And so, you know, can definitely, can definitely see the issues for sure. And the last thing that I would want is any of our officers to be in a position where, you know, they're overworked or the morale is down and that one bad guy is the one that they're going to have to deal with. And it's going to go bad if that happens. And I don't want that ever happen, and especially for the public. I met with Sheriff Martin this morning and he's dealing with a lot of the same issues in Lake County as a whole, recruitment, retention. And I know recruitment's tough because our salaries are low. He's 10 officers down, 10 deputies down right now, desperately trying to hire. And retention, you know, it's hard. I mean, we saw a lot of people leave under the previous administration, not just for money, but I'm sure their money had, you know, they could walk into Napa County and instantly a 30 to 40% salary increase, even getting busted down from a management-level position. So, Mr. McMurty, I agree, we need to do something. Unfortunately, it's money, you know, we'll have to be creative, but we have budget talks coming up and I think, you know, all the council members, you know, if we can find a way to do it, we're going to, we're going to try. For me personally, anyway, that's my opinion. So, as far as this 12th position, for me, this one's a no-brainer, my own personal thoughts. I'm good with getting this position in there now. And I mean, really, I know it's not enough, but it's a start. We need to do something and that's what the chief thinks we need to do. I think we need to go forward with it.
Well, the one thing I'd like to add, Gary, is that I've always wondered why a grocery store owner makes less than the beer drivers and the chip drivers and the grocery truck drivers, and we work seven days a week. And I feel a lot like the chief. We have about the same amount of people, 12, 14 people. And if I lost a couple of them and tried to run them, already they're seven days a week, I don't know what I'd do. But I get the feeling that I have a lot in common with a lot of you guys out there that are working extra-long shifts and things like that. And it is a shame, especially since the state mandated or the feds, whoever it was, that my lowest-paid employees, least skilled, got the dollar an hour raise. And then right in 2016, they got another dollar an hour raise equivalent to 25% of their wages. And I'm still making the same money I was 10 years ago. So I can feel the pain and I, but the thing is, we do have to manage our resources. And back in the, in the time in eight and nine, when things were really, really bad, sometimes we were happy to have money to be able to pay anybody. So we have to be physically responsible, but boy, this is something very serious and we definitely feel your pain. We appreciate the chief doing what he needs to do. And we were looking forward to that, trying to do the best we can to try and make working conditions better for everybody and keep the city safe, you know. Thanks for coming out.
Well, I would just say that living in a small city is such a great thing, but living in a small city with your own police department is just the best. And cities have a lot of choices. And we've made it clear that our choice is to keep a police department and keep you safe. And that's part of why we've got a nice building coming. But we fully support you guys, making sure you're safe and have enough guys to get it done.
Thank you.
I agree. As a county employee, I can definitely sympathize with the over, you know, let's do more work with fewer resources. But, you know, when I, when I go to work in the morning, I'm not putting my life on the line like our police officers do every day. So, I completely agree with the council's position of doing whatever we can to support you and whatever we can.
Thank you. Although not to make light of the situation, that planning, when you rolled that little door up, you may be putting...
Oh, it gets great. Oh, yeah.
And kind of reflecting what Councilman Sheil said, you know, morale, sometimes I think can be almost as dangerous as the hours and schedule. You know, police officers, I think morale-wise, they need to have their head on straight. And that comes, and that's, I don't mean that in a negative way. I mean, you need to be comfortable in your, in your situation. You need to be confident in your situation, with what you've got in front of you. But then you add to that scheduling, and I know that we've struggled, it seems like for years now with trying to keep the right amount of officers and covering shifts and, you know, you guys work unique hours to begin with. Your schedules are, you know, not conventional to the average nine to five. And so you start covering extra shifts and going back-to-back or doing something, it just gets dangerous. And so, I'm kind of with that on that. I think the 12th officer is just kind of a no-brainer. So, that would be my opinion. Anything to add, chief?
Unless there's further questions now.
Just a comment. When we met with the POA representatives, we suggested this because it'd be a quick way to get the 12th person in and make sure we have some backup. Because we haven't even been able to keep 11 officers filled. But that we would consider looking at when we're doing the budget to see if this could be a permanent situation and the next budget makeup. So, we're hoping that that is the case, but without looking at our budget numbers for the upcoming year, that's why we made this a temporary position until we can look at those numbers for the next fiscal year.
Well, that's a good point because we have 15 months still to work on future budget years and try to plan for this. So, this is something that we can, we can get started with and come back with other recommendations.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to budget for and hire a 12th police officer position as requested.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we're good. All right? Be safe out there, guys. Next, we have city council communications. I'm going to go ahead and start with Margaret first.
Nothing to report. I was supposed to be gone this week to the city manager's conference, but I'll be in tomorrow with the project issues I canceled, so I will be here for this today.
And I think we're, we kind of changed the hours of the...
Goal-setting?
Goal-setting.
Yes, we're going to make it a little shorter because there's like probably three to four council overs that are going to the division meeting for the Riverd Empire. So we'll try to get as much as we can done, if not all, and then if not, instead of future, a near-future time, maybe an evening or something if we have to.
David? Anything to report? Dan?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Chief?
Nothing further tonight. Thank you.
Roll around the room here. Kevin?
I got two quick ones. Just first off, next Thursday at our, or I'm sorry, next Wednesday at our planning commission meeting, we will be taking up the changes to the environmental study for the downtown improvements project in order to allow, allow night work. That will eventually be coming your guys' way. So, that planning commission meeting will kind of be the opening of the review period for there and then concluding with bringing that to you guys in March. The second item is, we have received two proposals in regards to our Lakefront Planning Grant. So we'll be putting together a selection committee here in the near future and then bringing that to you guys as well. We're pretty excited about supporting that project as well.
Thank you, Kevin. Are you behind you?
No, I'm fine.
Did you have something else? Oh, okay. Councilmember Parler?
Well, it occurs to me as I was toiling through the 326 pages of reports, that we really owe a great debt of gratitude to Planning Commission and the staff at the city of Lakeport because the recommendations are made such that when you have this CECO report that goes on and on and on and on, that we can actually trust and believe that they have done the due diligence and feel comfortable that all the work that goes on at the Planning Commission, that we can trust that when we make a decision, we don't have to read every single word, although we do cover most, all of us, every page almost every time. And I am just very grateful. And the same with the budget, Dan. I cannot imagine the amount of hours and sleepless nights that you guys put in to get all these reports sent to us. We get to read through them and then come through and make a summary decision based on a summary that we got during the meeting, but there's just so much work goes on. I just want to personally thank, you know, budget people, Dan and Ken over there and the rest of the planning commission for all the work you do behind the scenes because, man, I sure not, would not want to do that because we wouldn't have time to do any of the other business in Lakeport if we didn't get these staff recommendations and reports and summaries from the chief and things like that. So, very grateful for that. On and not so great note, I have personally made the recommendation that the mayor and I are meeting with Ken Sederlin to try and wrap this thing up. We're going to be hopefully meeting, if the mayor is amenable, at 4:45 for one hour and set up some parameters and find out what he's missing. And Tom's back there. He'll be wanting to get all of the reports that he never, said that he never got and in hopes that he can get the floodplain designation changed. He has someone at the county that allegedly can help him do this. And eventually he will get his flood insurance reduced along with some of his neighbors. So we're working on that. We're going to be working on that soon. I know, I told him, we have a very energetic new mayor and we're looking forward to getting this problem behind us.
Row. What day is it?
It's our next meeting so that we have to tie it up two days.
There we go. Yeah, we got next meeting.
And he only has one hour.
Yeah, we got to be done. We got to be done. I like it. So that means we can't have any closed session. Just kidding.
We could always do it after.
Yeah. We're going to do that again. Councilmember Sheil?
ABC and Transit next week here at Lakeport. And that's about it. Do we have special holiday hours for the city hall or, not this weekend, but next weekend?
Yes, Friday is closed, normal, closed Friday. And then Monday, next Monday, city hall will be closed.
Present's there.
Yeah. So there will be something posted on the... So there will be something posted on the doors this week.
Oh, other than, it's nice to see the survey marks on the sidewalks now too in front of the entrances. Sorry, it's like it's covered.
It's covered, yeah. Councilwoman Turner?
I would just like to encourage people to support Lake Family Resource Center this Saturday at Wine and Chocolate and Upday Growers. And that's all I have to report.
I'm not trying to make that, I haven't been up to that in a long time.
It just keeps getting better and better. Every year, they have different things, new things, they streamline their flow. It's pretty nice.
It's a fun event. I'm hoping it's still the kind of scene over there, but I'm on birthday duty for my wife, so I'm going to have to, yeah, taking the kid to Wine and Chocolate is probably not going to be a chance.
My wife and me like smoked chocolate and white zents, so.
We're getting a wine better.
They just don't, yeah, they just don't have enough of that. Per Ten Moutilla?
Nothing tonight.
And I'm going to pass also. The only thing is I'll be out of town, midway through this week, which is just about here and through the weekend, maybe into Monday. And so if any emergency comes up, you're charged.
Call me. Thanks a lot.
I'll be up north for a few.
Is it emergency street?
Other than that, we'll adjourn the meeting.